We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Worsler.
Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the agendas presented, please.
Second of a motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Ms. Schroeder for approval of the agenda. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we have some celebrations tonight. Congratulations first to Gina Brown, who is the Support Staff Star for November. A colleague described her like this. Gina goes above and beyond for everyone around her. She spends extra time making sure teachers are taken care of, principals have everything they need, and kids feel seen and loved. Gina treats parents with kindness and gentleness, and she takes care of situations with grace. Dover Hill is blessed to have her. Congratulations to Gina. Veterans Day. Throughout the district, Joplin Schools showed their gratitude to our veterans on Veterans Day. Thank you to all of the students and staff who created meaningful programs, assemblies, artwork, and recognitions in each of our school buildings. A special thank you to our JHS, JROTC students, who led the Presentation of Colors and Pledge of Allegiance at many of these events. November's Teacher Proud Tuesday winner is kindergarten teacher Melissa Kimberling from Cecil Floyd. Melissa was nominated by many parents and colleagues. Some of the kind words said about her are: Always goes above and beyond for her students. She pushes them to be their best and never gives up on them. She builds a bond with each student and really earns their trust. Joplin Schools is thankful for her lifelong impact she is having on her students and for going it all in every day. Congratulations. And finally, congratulations to Ava Dole. Senior Ava Dole has made Joplin proud again. Ava won the Misha Class Five Girls Cross-Country State Championship and is the first cross-country state champion in Joplin Schools' history. Ava, if you'll please join us, we've got a certificate for you. And we have Annabelle Rutledge here to give us the celebrations for Joplin High School.
Joplin Bands had a fantastic day at the district band auditions. The following is a list of students who have qualified to audition for all-state concert band and/or jazz band on December 6th at their Columbia Hickman Competition. For flutes, Ava Southwell will be the fifth chair. Madeline Nadini Nitepi will be the eighth chair. For clarinets, Michael Andre Bellinget, first. Karina Tovar, fourth. Eileen Bransetter, sixth. And Blakeen Pace England for ninth chair. For tenor sax, Aldrick Alner will be first chair. Trumpet, Micah Richards. French horn, Adara Soderstrom. Trombone, Tanner Selix. Tubas, Landon Haverley. And for general percussion, Alex Rupar and Justin Carey. For the jazz band, the tenor sax will also be Aldrick Arnold. For the trumpet, Micah Richards and Derek Sophia. And for the trombone, Tanner Selix. And piano, Emmett Kerr will be first chair. For the international dance competition, Joplin High School's very own Yesvy Putnik will be competing in Italy and Belgium with her younger sister, Arika, for the USA Dance Team in the international competition later this month for the Iduo World Championship. We went to wish both girls congratulations and good luck with their competition. MSSU's business gateway was success. Thank you to everyone who attended, and we went to wish congratulations to all our winners. Jacob Tatum, pictured to the left on screen, won first place in Business and Communications. Jayden Cameron and Alexandria Slater won second place in Management Decision-Making, and they are pictured to the right. Owen Weaver won first place in General Business. Vivian Lognecker and Reed Stanley won third place in Financial Plan. Alexis Walters won second place in Intro to Business. And Journey Gustafson won third place in Business Law. We're so proud of all of the students recognized today and the way they represent Joplin High School.
Ms. Sherrick, before we proceed, I'd like to give a shout out. We have a few students from Missouri Southern here tonight who've joined us as part of one of their sports and rec management courses. They chose to attend our board meeting as one of their government meetings that they have to attend as part of their class. So we'd like to thank Brody Hatfield, a football athlete; Katie Day, athlete; Taylor Knuckles, a softball athlete; Drew Von Dehar, a baseball athlete; Ohm Bushnell, a former baseball athlete; and Braden Lukart, a current baseball athlete at Missouri Southern, for joining us tonight. Had all of these in some way, shape, form, or another in class. And they're all great young people who bring a lot to Missouri Southern. So we thank them for joining us this evening at our board meeting.
Thanks for joining us. Welcome. All right, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping ahead. Let's do the superintendent's data report first.
Okay, Dr. Mongi has a lot of data for us to decipher this evening.
Yes, and I think Mr. Robertson is going to share the data committee report, and then I'll just hit some highlights from our APR that was recently announced.
Great, thank you. I'm excited to share that our district is improving quite a bit. This year, we've improved our annual performance report, which is our APR report, from going from just 69% up to 81%, which is nearly a 12-point gain since 2022, when we got to 69%. And it's our highest percentage in the last four years. Our graduation rate has gone up to 96%, which is also an all-time high for the school. We're seeing a steady MAP performance index gain across all content areas, with ELA, Science, and Social Studies all three on track. And we're just two points away from math being on track as well. Our data rotations have confirmed the strength of our core classroom instruction. Nearly 2,800 students in our not, our no-risk categories are thriving with positive average MPI scores well above 400, which is above the state's targets. Our DIBL scores are also very strong, with all grades performing at or above the 50th percentile. But we continue to succeed in second and third grade and in kindergarten readiness. We proudly serve students, 58 students who are English language learners and are continuing our Core Plus More support to ensure English language and special education students have an equitable access to grade-level content, content that's modified in a way to allow better access in preparation for the state assessments. But overall, Joplin Schools is proud of our academic momentum, and we're committed to moving math on track alongside our other core areas for another successful year next year.
Thank you. And I'll just highlight, we've shared a lot of information across our district and across our community here recently with our achievements. And the work is not done. The work is ever-evolving and continuing. But I would say there is much to be proud of and much to celebrate with all students. And that MPI is what we really focus on. I'm sharing that publicly with our community because that's a static number. That's a target that is predictable, that we can set to reach. And those numbers include all kids. And so, as Mr. Robertson said, our students without at-risk factors, they're well above 400 in their average NPIS. But even when we look at our student groups, we are meeting those state-on-track numbers for our core subjects. So, very proud of the work, very proud of our teachers. They've done a lot of heavy lifting. Our principals are in the heat of instructional leadership. They're doing a great job leading their systems, and this is the fruit of our labor. So, still work to do, but very, very proud of where we're at.
Dr. Mongi, you shared some information with us this afternoon regarding the DIBL scores, or average DIBL scores, and percentile ranking for incoming kindergarters.
Yeah, you'll see some stories on that. You've probably seen some social media shares. So, our incoming kindergarten students, we do those literacy assessments within DIBLs. And our average kindergarten student came in at the 51st percentile, which you would expect, 50th is normal. Our flight school students, that new full-day pre-K program that we have implemented, they came in at the 63rd percentile on average. And our SOAR Transitional Kindergarten students came in at the 77th percentile. So, what does that tell us? The early childhood programming we are putting into place is having a huge impact on our students' readiness. And we are seeing the impact of that as those kids matriculate through the system. You bet.
Okay, Policy Committee, do we have anything?
Yeah, I've got a briefer summary for that. During the Policy Committee, we went over 13 new policies that range from discipline to definitions of weapons in schools, student dress code, student enrollment eligibility, and artificial intelligence. So, our policy book is growing thicker, but it's good stuff to help us do a better job of leading our students.
Thank you. And financial statements.
Okay, so the financial statements tonight. We have our miscellaneous accounts at UMB totaling a little over 110,000. And then, our general investment and debt service accounts holding a little over 7.7 million. And then, we still have a little over 86 million invested with MoSIP and MoCAT. As we look at our committed cap outlay, it's on the third page of your financial statement. I just wanted to draw your attention to that because this is the first month you will see that additional 10 million that this board committed to Phase Two being line itemed. And so, with Phase One, Phase Two, and our currently budgeted cap outlay, the district has committed around 23 million of our cap-outlay reserves to improve district facilities. Thank you.
Health and Dental Plan?
Okay. Health and Dental, we are looking at data as of October 31st, 2025. So, we have spent, as of the fourth month of the fiscal year, we've spent a little over 3.7 million, which is about 42% of the total budget. When we look at just specifically the health piece of Health and Dental, the revenues were a little over 702,000. Last year, we were bringing in just barely over 600,000. So, we're seeing about an extra 100,000 a month in that revenue line. We also had dispersments of 689,000. And then, last year, we were at 450,000. So, still an increase over last year, but certainly looked better than September. Ending balance of October was 433,000, which is about .63 months of the 12-month average of claims. If you remember back to September 30th, that is an increase over last month's balance. So, not much, but about 13,000 up. And so, we're watching it very closely, referencing back to 2025 fiscal year. The balance as of October 31st was 2.3 million. So, we still know we're in a very serious situation, but we did, we had a good October. With things we have done since the last board meeting, where we've just trying to keep the board and our employees up to date on our health plan, we've met with HPAK. We're modeling out what it might look like to need to do a fiscal injection mid-year into the Health Fund if we get to that situation, so that we are proactively planning ahead. So, we're staying hands-on with some better reports from Anthem and some of our billing that is coming in with claim information. And we're just, we're ensuring that we're liquid within the Health Fund. And so, we will, we have a plan ready to intervene with a cash injection if needed. And then, a reminder on the dental, the dental plan. Last month, we had that check that we reissued, and so, there were very, there were hardly any expenses. And so, this month, we caught, we caught up on that check. So, you're going to see double. When we get to November financials and Health and Dental, you will see it evening back out. Dr. Dickey, sorry. Dr. Dickey, did we have any rebates this month that would be offsetting any of our expenses? Yes, there was a rebate that came in for the second quarter. And so, we, no, the third quarter, so sorry. The third quarter rebate came in. And so, and we got a couple payments for stop-loss reimbursements. And then, in November, I've seen two reimbursements come back in for stop-loss. And so, we've still got a little bit outstanding that is owed to us from our stop-loss carrier. But we, we think that it's going to be coming soon. And then, we have been able to, future claims that maybe we haven't seen on our bills yet, and we're watching those. And so, it's a, it's a better picture than we had anticipated. So, for October, how, how large was the rebate that we received or rebates? It was... Let's see if I wrote it on my paper. I should have wrote it down. Just an estimate is fine. I'm just wondering, would we have been upside down had we not received the rebate? Yes, I mean, we were still, yeah, we would have certainly. It was about 75,000. I wanted to be able to tell you exactly, and I can open it up and give it for you. Sorry I didn't write it on my report for today. Thank you.
Dr. Dickey, question. In terms of the long-term solvency of this, I have concerns, like everybody else on the board, in terms of what that looks like for our employees, as well as the district's liability and contribution to the plan. It's my understanding from a conversation with Ms. Sherrick that there were conversations regarding a lifetime stop-loss cap for individual participants in the plan. Is that correct?
We did ask about it. We asked about that, yeah. There, what, our plan does not have a lifetime stop-loss. We have a, like a per-person-per-year, and then, a, an aggregate stop-loss, but not, not a lifetime.
And it appears, thank you, it appears that this has happened relatively quickly, and we know that health insurance costs are going up significantly at all levels. But what is the plan as we move forward? I know we might have to do a cash infusion into this plan to really move it forward and to make it more responsible. But my question is, what is our plan in terms of our broker? What are we looking at next year, the year after that? So, we don't get into another situation that would be similar to this. It's fair to our employees, but also fair to the district's obligation to those individuals as well.
So, as we started looking at what are the options, we put every option on the table, whether that looks like, let's price out a private, fully-funded plan. That's looking at very high increases to the, if, when I looked at a plans that were similar to what we have now self-insured, it would be about 30% to 40% premium increases for our employees. We also have talked about, like, what does an insurance consortium look like? With Met or MiHUP, or there's like an Ozark Group. So, just looking at that, again, the premiums were much higher for comparable coverage. And so, we certainly like being self-funded, and that's the preference. And so, then we look at, what do we do to keep the revenues up? And so, I am looking at, like, what is the opportunity cost of having a little bit higher deductible on stop-loss? If you remember back when we've looked at some of the data, we had many claimants over 100,000, but we, we were only getting reimbursements on, on three. And so, is it worth the $60,000 a month premium, which has now increased to $90,000 a month? So, we're going to reprice that out for the next year to see if we need to do something a little bit higher that's cost-effective.
And I just want to clarify, Dr. Dickey, I don't know that, Riley, I don't know if you know, but our stop-loss is at 200,000. So, when, when she's saying that we had those right at 100,000, if they go over 200,000, and that's like our own insurance on our plan, and we get that money back. So, we had a lot of claimants that were underneath that amount, but just didn't hit stop-loss. So, that's part of the reason for such a bad year.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna look at things like that. And that, when I have talked, I've talked to many different districts across the state who are in similar situations, and even some in other states. That was one thing that they're doing similarly, is repricing out stop-loss. I inquired if we could do that mid-year, and it was not an option for us. But it's certainly on our radar to look at for next year, to have a little bit, little bit broader scope when we're looking at options for, for that plan. And then, we need to look at what premiums are, and if the district needs to make a greater contribution with those premiums, and then balancing out philosophy of what should the district contribute percentage-wise of the base plan versus the employee. And so, we are, we're analyzing that across not only our plans, but some of competing plans or other school districts, looking just, because we do want to be competitive and fair to our employees. But we've had a few years of not really touching rates, and we, we need to make sure that we're, we're being fair and increasing as we need to. And Veronica, I grossly underestimated, our rebate was 212,000.
Do we have any, has it been considered to change our contract with Barker Phillips-Jackson?
It has been, we have, we've talked about everything. And so, since I have been in the district, and I think it's the same for Mr. Crawford, that has not gone out to bid. We, we have been, we've been, we've been happy, and we feel like we, we're getting some good information now so that we can make some different decisions about how much money is coming into the plan. Like, unfortunately, regardless of who our broker was, like, there's not much to do about situations that create high-cost claimants. And I, and I don't know that the situation that we're in is directly related to any management. I, we've, we've just had a rough year. Do you think that's fair?
I think that's fair. I think that when we tried to look at this and analyze that with board members as well, I think the determination was made. This was not something anyone could project, let alone our broker or the administrative team. It has been related to high claims that we've had that were existing, so that's what we're addressing. We have looked at issues that we can address with Barker Phillips-Jackson, and those are possibly in process at this time.
And, and I will tell you, Riley, like, Justin and I together have articulated our desire to be very hands-on. It is, it is Joplin Schools' plan. The broker works for the district, and it's our desire to be, to have firmly, a firm grasp on what's happening and making the decisions. And so, that's a piece of just making sure we're clear on what our options are. And even if they're not maybe popular options, we want to look at them and make the best decision for the district.
I've been on the board five years, and I don't recall looking at other options. So, that's why I asked that question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is, sorry.
I was just going to say, the current situation certainly does give a very good reason to maintain a conservative balance in that Health Fund account if we can get there again, so that we're able to weather rough years like this.
Is there any visibility pushback on the staff about the types of claims we have? So, like, if we have a bunch of this type of claim, like, hey, guys, we're, you know, health services are not related, that the staff can improve? Sorry, I'm not asking that very well. Does the staff know what types of claims we're making? And is there any feedback, or is there any changes that staff can make to help reduce those claims?
There is, there is possibility to be transparent when it comes to preventative healthcare because there, there is recognized savings when we're trying to be preventative and making our staff aware of more cost-effective options related to the plan, as opposed to maybe choosing a telehealth option versus an ER visit. And so, we are really working to improve that communication and working with HPAK and with the Health and Wellness Committee to, to improve our communication with the, with our employees. Because there's certainly, like, we, we had a record-high number of ER visits, and many of them did not need to be. And so, making sure that we're very clear, here's your options, and let's be honest about what the effect is on the plan when you choose to go to the emergency room. Take care of yourself, but if you could be seen by your primary care provider or telehealth, or even urgent care, like, it's priced much differently.
Yeah, we don't want to have people thinking that, oh, I can't go to the emergency room because it's going to negatively affect it. But also, have the discretion to know that last month, we had 47 ER visits. Did we really need 47 ER visits?
And I think that's a two-pronged approach. You know, our HPAK committee is very educated, I would say, Dr. Harding, you're on that committee as well, and I think you've been on it during its conception. They're very educated into benefits and plans, and I, and they go back out and speak to their buildings and staff, educate them as well. Now, we have the Staff Wellness Committee that we started, which is something...
That started last year.
Pardon me?
The Wellness Committee that started last year.
Yes, uh-huh, yeah. And so, we're going to use that as a second prong, also, to get some of these education pieces out. And, and that's a totally different committee. I think there's maybe only one or two members that are, that slip over. So, we're hoping to work on those educational pieces on some of the things that you're addressing that way. So that staff, like you said, we don't want to prevent any ER visit when it's wanted or warranted, but that staff understand that when we are self-funded, that the better we manage the plan as employees ourselves and what we use, the healthier the plan will be as well.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Worsler, do we have any public comments? Thank you. Now, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mr. Hartwell. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Regular agenda, Accounts Payable, Dr. Dickey. Okay, Accounts Payable. In front of you is 1,651,000 and some change. It's a, it's a very small, relatively, bill list because it did not include a monthly payroll due to how the billing cycles fell within the board meetings. Happy to, you'll see it next month, don't worry. Happy to answer any questions. Do I have a motion to accept the...
I'll make a motion that we accept hair bills.
Pay the accounts payable? Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Ms. Messer. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Pearl Logic Recovery. Okay, thank you. So, Pearl Logic, we have been working with Moazbo and some other state organizations, and we're made aware of a recovery opportunity with Pearl Logic to retain, or to attempt to recoup some prior insurance claims related to pharmaceutical overcharges in a national resettlement program, or a national settlement program. We have, and why we, Mr. Crawford and I, and our Director of Accounting, Ms. Lopez, like, we have been participating in some webinars and reading through the materials. And we have spoken with the district's private counsel about the legitimacy of the opportunity, and speaking to some others across the state. And it is a legitimate opportunity. And so, we feel that it is in our best interest to attempt to recoup some district, district claims. And so, this is available to self-insured entities with more than 200 employees. So, Joplin Schools qualifies. Mr. Crawford and I are working on paperwork to begin relationship with Pearl Logic so that we can attempt to reach a settlement. We would not see funds back for maybe 12 to 18 months. We would owe a, a small percentage to Pearl Logic for their work in recouping these funds for the district. But all of any, any recouped claim dollars would be deposited back into the Health Fund. And we don't pay anything until we know if we're getting a settlement. Correct. They, there is no upfront cost and no cost to the district unless there is a settlement. And this specific agreement, if I wasn't clear, and I'm sorry about that, is that we, it's in a, for us to engage with Pearl Logic, for them to have access to go, to advocate on our behalf for this recovery.
What kind of data would they get access to of our reports?
They, actually, a lot of the data is, is not coming from us. It's they want, like, who our pharmacy program was, and like, how many employees we had. And then, the actual pharmaceutical companies that are providing the recovery, they are obligated to provide prescriptions that they, that they provided to patients and private self-funded, or self-funded plans, and the cost of those.
and private self-funded or self-funded plans and the cost of those. The data is actually coming from-
The data, the data the district presents is minimal compared to, to what they're going to be looking into.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we approve this action item. The Pearl Logic agreement.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Ms. Musser, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. FTC Broadcasting Program IT and AV Infrastructure Upgrades, Dr. Harding.
Uh, yes, and I'll have Mrs. Dorton come up and, and help speak to this. But obviously with Joplin High School was built with the broadcasting studio. Um, we're entering a phase that we need to kind of upgrade some of the technology and some of the connections within the building to allow the students to experience broadcasting, not only in the gym and the, in the auditorium, uh, football games, uh, to increase that connectivity. So, uh, Mrs. Dorton will kind of add some more details for this exciting, um, upgrade we're getting ready to receive.
So this summer we were made aware of a, uh, Area Career Center Construction Grant available to us as part of House Bill Senate, or House Bill Two that was signed by the governor this summer. Um, so as part of that, as part of that bill, uh, Mr. Fit and I applied for an Area Career Center, uh, Construction Grant that would go towards the renovation of some of our facilities. And so as part of that, the broadcasting studio at Jet HD is the facility that we chose. Um, we were, so it's a 50-50 grant, um, so we requested $200,000 for that grant, um, which would, which would require a $100,000 district match. Um, this project came in at 166,199.05, so it's, it's definitely under the 200,000. Um, but the district is only responsible for 50% of that project. Um, that will just improve the wiring, the whole infrastructure of that facility to make it really streamline the process and make things work more effectively when we're looking at all of our live broadcasts, including like graduation, football games, basketball games, any of our, um, PAC events and anything else that we stream through Jet HD.
This is a great program. I know that, uh, it's a real benefit to our students. A lot of our students have gone on very, uh, good jobs and, uh, here locally and other places. So, uh, I, I support this. I'd like to move that we approve this.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Schroder. Any other questions?
We're doing the end of other people who bid the project or was it just Kansas City AV?
Uh, it was just Kansas City AV, they're a tips provider for the district, so they're guaranteed.
Okay.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Now the FTC Jet Lath Replacement for Advanced Manufacturing Program.
Yes, very similar, um, upgrades for our students in our manufacturing classes to make sure they're working on machinery that they will be working on in the future in, in the business world. And so Mrs. Dorton will have an update on that as well.
And then I'll leave. Um, kidding. Um, so the two laths that we're replacing in the advanced manufacturing, uh, classroom, the shop are, actually were donated to us after the tornado from Ozark Tech, Technical College. Um, so they're about 30 years old because they were used when we got them. Um, so definitely, definitely time for renewal, glad that they've made it this long. Um, the, I guess when I look at, when we look at this purchase, um, it's through our, uh, DESI Enhancement Grant through the state. That enhancement grant for equipment is a 75% state, um, funded and 25% district matched through our capital ally funds. Um, so we budgeted $60,000 for those pieces of equipment. Um, so we had, we had a couple bids come in that qualified. Um, one, one was at 52,996 and one was at 59,422.92. Um, we are choosing to go with the higher bid. Um, it is Sebastian Equipment out of Joplin. And even though it's a higher price than the other one, it's really just based on that local presence and our current partnership with them through our advisory board as well as just that convenience of having that accessible onsite support that's, that's local. Whereas the other companies out of Florida. I've ran into a few, uh, few, uh, visits where we have to pay somebody to come and it's, it's $800 just to get them to show up and then hourly, which is pretty expensive. So, um, our recommendation is that our, our 25% match would be 14,855.73, which was bu- budgeted in for enhancement grant purchases this year.
And our, the rules allow us to accept a higher bid if we have a good reason for that. So we're in compliance by accepting this higher bid.
I'll make a motion, we approve it. The, uh, bid for the lathe.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Ms. Musser, please vote.
Yes.
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 And I abstain. The dump truck purchase, thank you, Mrs. Dorton.
Uh, yes, so not to take up all your time, but I could spend quite a bit of time up here talking about how often we would use our dump truck. Um, the current truck we use as a dump truck, I would not call as a, the dump truck we are looking at. Um, it does a tremendous amount of work, probably more work than what it's designed to do, um, especially in the winter when we're clearing lots. Um, and right now the truck is over 20 years old. Um, it's, has a lot of problems. Uh, right now the biggest problem is the, um, defrost, uh, air, the heat, none of it's working in it currently. And I really don't feel comfortable sending my people out, um, to clear lots in the winter, um, without a usable truck. And it's very hard to find parts for it. And so what we're looking to do is purchase a, a brand new dump truck, um, for the district. Uh, for many reasons, obviously snow removal is one and the amount of, uh, load it could carry and especially with the construction we have going on, it can be very useful in some of those projects as well. So, um, we're presenting to you a purchase of a new dump truck. To get approved now, hopefully we will have it before January is the goal. And, um, I'll let Dave have any further follow-up. Cause he's been with the dump truck for about as many years as we've had it, so.
While I wish that we were bringing the cost of a Tonka dump truck to you, uh, that is not the case. Uh, case in point, I can tell you that in 19, or in, in 2010, when we were purchasing school buses, we were paying $83,000 for school buses. We are now paying $190,000 for school buses. So, uh, large equipment has grown exponentially as far as the cost. Uh, we believe that, uh, for the full package, that this is the, the best use of our funds for replacing the existing dump truck. And so we are asking you tonight to consider that.
Do we have the funds in our capital budget for this?
Yes.
I'd make a motion, we approve the purchase of the dump truck.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Schroder. Please vote.
Yes.
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 The April 2026 School Board Election, Dr. Siketa.
Annually, we have a school board election, uh, depending upon the number of candidates that sign up to run for the school board. And this is no exception. We will have three positions open in the spring. And I'll read to you the resolution so the public can hear it too. Notice is hereby given to the qualified voters of the School District of Joplin Schools, Jasper County and Newton Counties in Missouri, that the annual election of said district will be held on Tuesday, the 7th day of April, 2026, beginning at 6:00 AM and closing at 7 o'clock PM of said day to vote upon the following proposition. To choose three directors who shall serve as members of the Board of Education of Joplin Schools for a term of three years each. Be it resolved that the Secretary of the Board of Education is hereby authorized and directly to notify in writing the clerk of the county court of Jasper County, Missouri, and the clerk of the county of Newton County, Missouri, of the adoption of this notice of election no later than 4:30 PM on Tuesday, January 27th, and to include said notification, all of the terms and provisions required by law. And before you, uh, adopt school board election, Joplin Schools encourages qualified applicants interested in running for a position on the school board to file to be a candidate in April, in the April 7th, 2026 election. Interested people may file at Joplin Schools Administration Building, 825 South Pearl Avenue, Joplin, Missouri. Filing will begin on Tuesday, December 9th at 8:00 AM and will continue during the district's regular business hours, which are Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, except for the first and last dates. A candidate filing will not occur on days that the school district's offices are closed due to inclement weather. Filing will also not occur on the following dates when the school district's offices are closed. Wednesday, December 24th, 2025 through Monday, December 29th. Candidate filing will resume at 3:00 PM on Tuesday, December 30th, 2025 and close at 5:00 PM. Tuesday, December 30th, 2025, the last day for candidate filing. Names of qualified candidates will be placed on the ballot in order of filing, except for candidates filing on the first day. The district will determine by random drawing the order in which the names of the first day candidates will appear on the ballot. There are three board positions available with a three-year term. For more information, contact Cheryl Worsler at 417-625-5200, extension 2020, or email CherylWorsler@JoplinSchools.org.
I move to approve the attached resolution calling for the April 7th, 2026 Board of Education election, please.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Mr. Robertson, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Legislative priorities, Dr. Siketa.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, annually, in the recent history, the board, I'm very proud to say, has been adopting legislative priorities to help guide our decision-making and our discussions with local legislators and the Missouri General Assembly as a whole and to help educate our community. Uh, last year's, uh, legislative priorities were virtually the same with the exception of two slight additions. Uh, first, uh, at the beginning advocacy for public education. It is very obvious that all of us in the community need to advocate for public education. An important pillar of our community and of our state and nation. So there's a paragraph outlining that. And then at the very end, partnerships that expand student learning opportunities was added. Uh, and that goes along with our real-world learning approach and especially the things that we're doing with career academies and, uh, and, and all things for students grades PK through 12. The Joplin Schools supports legislation that strengthens partnerships between schools, higher education, businesses and community organizations to expand real-world learning for students. This includes dual credit, career academies, internships and workforce training by removing barriers and aligning the resources the state can help ensure students graduate prepared for colleges and careers in life, supporting local workforce and economic development. So I would highly recommend the board adopt these legislative priorities that will also give our key communicators the umbrella to work under in terms of what their advocacy is for public education, uh, here in Joplin.
I move that we approve the administrative, administration's recommendation regarding the board, regarding the legislative priority positions as stated, whatever. Should have said it the way I wanted to say it.
I have a motion by Ms. Schroder, a second by Mr. Hartwell. There's no discussion.
I'd just like to make one short comment that I appreciate the board approving legislative priorities annually because we know that the target changes but the mission doesn't. And for our board to take an active role as we have in the past few years in terms of advocacy is very important and I think it's valuable. I've had feedback from some of our local legislators that they like to see this. So I would just encourage, uh, once we approve this this evening, to then share that with them as well. So they clearly know exactly what the district's priorities are as we move into the upcoming legislative session.
I also agree with Riley that this is something great that we're doing. Even though we don't have to support everything on it, the big picture of things that we're supporting are, are good and public education is important and our state legislatures need to know how we stand.
Thank you. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Dr. Siketa, the first reading of MSBA policy update.
As Mr. Robertson discussed earlier, policy update 24D as a first reading. Uh, policies with artificial intelligence, reduction in professional staff, special education, school admissions, eligibility to enroll, student dress, weapons, discipline, behavioral threat assessments, investigating child abuse and neglect are just a few of the policies that we would like you to approve on first reading.
I move that we approve first reading of the policies before us.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mr. Robertson, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. And the audit presentation for 2024, 2025, Dr. Dickey.
Okay, so tonight is a situation that is a first for me where we are going to have our auditor, Brian Eckoff, present the audit to you without asking for a motion to approve it yet. And he's, so he's going to, um, go through some logistics of why we are in the situation we're in. Um, but he, I heard the, the computer ding and so I believe Brian is ready to go and present the audit. And Eric's gonna drive the PowerPoint.
Did everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm Ryan Eckoff with West Working Company. Um, we're gonna do a brief overview of your financial statements. Um, as she said, it's a little bit different this year. Um, I've never presented an audit as a draft before, um, and we're having to do that this year. Um, so the reason being is we have to use the OMB data compliance supplement for our guidebook to do your federal program audit. Um, so since you have more than $750,000 of federal expenditures, that requires us to do a single audit or a federal program audit. That compliance supplement is issued somewhere around May every year, um, but it has not been issued yet. Um, so we are waiting on OMB to actually issue that report. And our guidance says that we are not allowed to actually issue your federal program audit until they issue that compliance supplement. So we audited your federal programs based upon last year's compliance supplement because we believe this year's compliance supplement will not have significant changes. Um, right now DESI has, has indicated that if we get down to the wire at your December meeting, um, you will have to just approve the financial statement audit. And then we will have to break the federal program audit back to you separately. Um, and that may be in January, February or whenever they finally approve it. It is due to DESI by December 31st for your federal or for your financial statement audit. But the federal program audit is actually due to OMB by January 31st. So assumption is, is that they're gonna put an extension on the January 31st deadline since they are so far behind the ball. Um, but right now we are just basically in a holding pattern. Um, I don't want to have to tell you guys that we're splitting your audit, which then means additional fees and things like that. So we are holding off as long as possible. And once we get to a December 1st deadline, uh, we're gonna start splitting reports if the data compliance supplement has not been issued. So, um, nothing on our end, nothing on your guys' end. It's the OMB data compliance supplement that we're waiting on. So, so that is the reason for the draft on the actual PowerPoint this year. So, we're gonna dive into the financial statements. Um, I'm gonna do a brief overview and then you guys can let me know if you have any questions. So, um, on the next slide is actually going to be the independent auditor's report. I mean, if you read this, it will say that financial statements were presented fairly. So this is a clean audit opinion or a good audit report. Um, so that's exactly what you want to see in your audited financial statements. The next slide is going to be the statement of activities. Um, it's kind of a different financial statement. It has the expenditures down the left-hand side, offset by revenues through the middle of the page to show a net cost down the right-hand side. Um, the two things that we always highlight on this are food service and community services. Before COVID, everyone was losing money on food service. During COVID, districts started making money on food service. Um, now we're back to the years of pre-COVID where if you look, you can see food service costs of district $162,000 this year. And then the community service that year, before and after care and, uh, things like that. Um, you can see that we actually had an increase in fund balance on that of about $87,000. So community service is doing well. The next slide is gonna be your balance sheet. And it's going to show you the fund balances through the four funds. Um, so as of June 30th, um, we have $110 million in fund balances. And you can see those split between the four funds. The special revenue fund, that's your teachers' salaries and benefits. Um, the fund balance in that one always goes to zero. So the only item left in that is to pay off payroll liabilities. And then at the bottom, that's where you can see the various fund balances. And the next slide is going to give you the breakdown of those fund balances. Um, and you can see you have 996,000 of scholarship restricted in your general fund. Moving on down under a- Moving on down, under assigned, you have food service of $946,000. That is all of the years during COVID when you were making money on food service. DESI requires you to track that food service balance. And since you're now losing money on food service, that balance will start to dwindle. If you weren't losing money on food service, DESI would want you to come up with a spin-down methodology to lower that burden, basically, because they don't want you to build a balance on food service. And then student activities, that's your clubs and organizations and classes and things like that. That's one point one thing. And then the remaining balance in the general fund of $67 million is your unassigned. That's for day-to-day operations of the district. Over in the debt service, you can see the total amount gets restricted if only it's spent on debt service. And then in the capital projects fund, the amounts that are committed are the amounts that the board actually approved specific contracts for. So we had some capital outlays, some technology purchases, and transportation purchases. And then the remaining balance in the capital projects fund of $27 million is always still as assigned, because that is for future capital projects of the district. The next slide is going to be a statement of revenues and expenditures. And you can see total revenues were about $127 million, and expenditures were about $112 million. So overall, net increase in fund balance of about $15 million this year. So a good year financially for the district. You can see the general fund increased about $12 million, and the capital projects fund increased about $3 million. So a good year financially for the district. The next slide is going to show you the bonds payable. So we started the year with $97.5 million, ended the year with $91.4 million, paid down 6.1. And then the next slide is going to show you actually all of those payments through 2024. And here, where debt service is prepared for those payments, you'll continue to see that balance fluctuate as you go through those years. So the next slide is going to be a five-year comparison of revenues. If you look at the fourth chart over, or the fourth graph over on the right, that is the federal. You can see the influx of the COVID dollars, where federal jumps up to 19%. And then it has steadily declined. And then overall, you can see this year we had a bump in state funding. But then overall, your biggest driver of your money is your local dollar, obviously, coming in about 53% this year. The next slide is going to be a five-year comparison of your expenditures. Overall expenditures continue to increase. If you look, it's about 77% of your overall expenditures are salaries and benefits. If you look at the chart, it doesn't look like it's increasing. However, it's increasing at about the same rate as your other expenditures. So as an overall percentage of your overall budget, it continues to increase, but it's increasing at the same rate as all of your other expenditures, basically. So that's why your charts basically look flat and you look across all the years. The next chart will be a selected trends for five years of reserve ratio and average daily attendance. This year, reserve ratio was 73.57. And obviously, that's continued to increase over the last several years. And then this year, average daily attendance was 7,087. So it's kind of nice to see an increase in your average daily attendance. After the last couple of years, we've got a couple of years of increase there. I'm not seeing that across the board in all districts. There's still some districts struggling to get their attendance back post-COVID. So it's nice to see your guys' attendance is back up. The next slide will be the report on state compliance. While we're there, we look at Missouri laws and regulations. So if you see any violations, we bring it to your attention. And you can see in this report that it says it's fairly stated. So this is another clean report, exactly what you want to see. The next slide is going to be the report on internal control. We don't give an opinion on internal control, but we use it in our risk assessment, and we determine where to spend additional time during the audit. And if we come across any issues with internal control, we bring it to your attention in this report. And you can see that it says we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control. So exactly what you want to see there. And then the next slide is going to be the report on federal programs. So this is your single audit. It's your uniform guidance audit. If you read through that, it says that there is no findings. But we're going to skip over that slide if that's just the paragraphs. And the next slide is going to be the actual summary of findings and question costs. And unmodified means clean opinion or good audit report. No, all the way down, except for the bottom one, is there's no findings, no question costs. Towards the bottom of the screen, you can see that we spent the majority of our time in special education cluster, the student financial aid cluster, and title one. So that's the three major programs that we gave all of our tests to them and pulled all the invoices and things out of your general ledger to make sure that they were allowable expenditures for the specific program. And then the bottom of that slide, it says if you qualify as a low-risk, and it's no. When they wrote uniform guidance, they wrote it for accrual basis financial segments. And 99% of the school districts in the state of Missouri are cash basis, so you will never qualify as a low-risk audit team. Do not change your financial segments to accrual basis, say cash basis. Just know that it will require us to audit a higher percentage of your federal programs because you want to qualify as low-risk. And then the next page is going to say none, and none, which is no findings. And then the last two slides, these are inventory instances where we feel like we can make a small improvement to the district. You know, during our field work, I had Diane Postman come down and have a visit. She went out to several of the buildings. And both of these recommendations are, in my opinion, similar. They're on the cash receipt side, and it has to do with your gate receipts and then also your votes in organizations. And basically, if you're to read through those, it talks about how, in the gate receipt situation, maybe the athletic director, their secretary has the cash, as well as the receipt all invested in, and then nobody's doing any double-check. So on both of these instances, it's a situation where we feel like the internal controls on cash coming in could be improved by either doing a secondary where the initial deposit that goes to central office to then reconcile to what goes actually to the building, or changes where not one individual has their own bunch of cash at a single time. There's always two people in the room, something like that. So one's title of cash receipts, the other one's title of gate receipts, but they're both pretty similar in that instance. And really, that's the only two recommendations we have. It's a clean audit. It's a good financial year. It was a pleasure working with everybody. I know a little bit of a transition this year with me taking over and leading everything, and then, you know, actually doing the presentation this year. I know Maggie did the presentation last year. So I appreciate all of her work on your guys' end, and overall, it's a great audit.
What action do we need to take on this, since it's a draft audit and not been completed? Are we approving something tonight, or is this for informational purposes? I noticed it's on our action items. So are we approving the draft audit?
We moved it, oh, sorry, Brian. We had moved you down under action items in our agenda because Brian was unable to log on until 6:30. And so for the sake of the timeliness of the agenda, but there is not action for the board to take.
So do we need to maybe table this until the final audit is prepared? Maybe a motion to table this item?
I move that we table it.
I have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Musser, to table the audit approval until the final audit is ready. Please vote.
Yes.
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 If there is no further business, I will accept a motion to adjourn. But also, thank you for your presentation before.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Robertson.
Second.
A second by Mr. Hartwell to adjourn. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes.